Good evening and welcome to the January 2nd, 2024, special meeting or reorganization meeting for the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out in a cold evening. We usually start with a moment of silence, so if we could do that this evening, please, please let's take a moment of silence together. Now let's pledge allegiance. Please join the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Is there any public comment this evening? We will do our swearing-in ceremony. Judge Petrucci is here, and if he would come forward. And I believe Ms. Snyder is first.
Yes. I had you first, right on top.
Yep.
So you'll do left hand, left hand, right hand up, wherever you want to stand. Yeah, wherever's comfortable.
There you go.
Okay. First of all, good evening to everybody and Happy New Year. I'm Judge Petrucci, and I promise this will be quick. Ellen, are you ready? So you'll repeat after me. I, Ellen Snyder.
I, Ellen Snyder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And as a supervisor.
And as a supervisor.
Of Newtown Township.
Of Newtown Township.
I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You are in. Great job. Congratulations.
Congratulations, buddy.
You've done this before.
I got a memorat.
Left hand, right hand up, and then you'll repeat after me. I, Philip Calabro.
I, Philip Calabro.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And as a supervisor.
And as a supervisor.
Of Newtown Township.
Of Newtown Township.
I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Again. Great job holding that Bible. Yeah. Phil, we'll get you to sign later when we're done, too, because we got one more we're going to do. We'll do George. Mr. Pollitt.
George Pollitt.
Just you? You want to hold the Bible? Sure. Come on up here. Yeah, he wants us in the center. So just hold it with your left hand and your right hand up. Hey, so come here. You can come up.
Here, you get to hold the Bible.
Yeah. It's a big job. Are you up for it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so right hand up, left, okay. Is this good? We're good here? Okay.
I, George T. Pollitt.
I, George T. Pollitt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And as an auditor.
And as an auditor.
Of Newtown Township.
Of Newtown Township.
I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. Good job. You did an excellent job. So don't go anywhere. We're going to get you to sign over here. So do you want to... George, if you don't mind, just sign right there. And I'll give you the originals.
And would we like a group picture?
Oh, George, I'm sorry. One more time. Here's your original. Terrific. Thank you, sir. Yep, you're done. Don't worry about it. So Phil, you're going to sign?
Sure.
Oh, you're good. And then sign that one. And then thank you. And you have a paper clip, too. And the original. And then Ellen is... Oh, you got a pen.
I do have.
And then two right here, right here, and right here. I'll give you yours back.
Sure.
Perfect. Like I said, I'll keep it out, and then you have the originals. All right, beautiful. So we're doing a group photo, right? You guys all coming in?
Yep.
How do you want the line up?
How like where?
I think you're like the last two.
You good? Okay. Good job. Thank you, guys. Again, congratulations. Congratulations. All right, Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Good evening, guys, actually. Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, Happy New Year, everybody.
Okay. Moving right along. The next item on the agenda is the organization of the Board of Supervisors. Do we have a motion for the election of chairman?
I make a motion to elect Dennis Fisher as chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor of Dennis Fisher as chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I did not oppose. Motion to elect a vice chair. Do we have a motion for vice chair?
Motion to elect Ellen Schneider's vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Calabro. I will second that nomination. All those in favor of electing Ellen Snyder as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. I forgot to say five zero for chairman. And motion to elect an assistant secretary, assistant treasurer.
Motion to elect John Mack as assistant secretary and assistant treasurer.
Thank you.
Second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of electing John Mack as assistant secretary, assistant treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next on the agenda is comments of the chairman and board members. I just have one or two minutes. Just like to acknowledge a few of the commitments, a few of the achievements that we reached in 2023. We hired and promoted key public service, police and fire department staff. We received a SAFER grant award from the federal government for fire services. We purchased critical capital equipment for the Public Works Police and Emergency Services, some of which was purchased with grant funding. The Lower Doolington Road Trail was finally completed. Input from the residents was considered and taken into account. The plastics ordinance was presented, I'll say re-presented, reviewed, advertised, and passed. The Wawa settlement agreement was reached with solar panels on the Wawa. In November, we had a clean audit presented by our auditor. By our auditor, Mailey, our official auditor. In 2024, we... The 2024 budget was passed and it focused on emergency services. Just a couple more. We continue to work with our jointer partners to discuss and move ahead our joint zoning to address 5G wireless and EV, electric vehicle charging stations, and more. We achieved a contract agreement with our non-uniformed employees. And I believe I've covered everything that I had written down here. There was more, but that captures some of the main items. That's my comments. Any other board members have comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment first. I would like to congratulate Ms. Snyder for her nomination to the chair, vice chair. And I know you worked very hard for that, so you worked very hard on a few other things. And I just wanted to announce that on the 19th of December, I entered Ms. Snyder's name for the 2004 City and State of Pennsylvania Above and Beyond Women nominations. I mentioned your leading role in the passage of a women's reproductive rights resolution passed by the Newtown Supervisors, also for your work in getting the single-use plastics ban. Just so people know, this publication is a premier multimedia news organization that dedicates its coverage to Pennsylvania's state and local government, including all things politics and public policy. And the nomination deadline is January 12th, 2024, and I urge all my colleagues to also nominate Ms. Snyder for that award. And I'll post that information, the link and everything, on my website. So congratulations.
Kyle, if anything?
Yeah. I want to say congratulations to everyone that got elected this past November, Mr. Pollitt, and also to the three of you who were elected to positions on this board. So congratulations. I look forward to doing business of Newtown Township with you guys this year.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Ms. Snyder?
Thank you, John, for that nomination. That humbles me. That's... I hope I make a difference. I try to make a difference for Newtown Township to, you know, take the lead in environmental concerns and other concerns. I think we do a good job, so thank you for that. Thank everybody for their support this year. I would like to thank you, Renee and Chris, for being here, for helping me, and Elaine McCarron, who is co-chair of the environmental, our environmental group, and the hard work that she's done on plastics. And we couldn't do it without her, so thank you very much. And I would also like to thank my running mate, Phil. I think we did a good job together. Like opposites attract, and we did that. And congratulations, George.
Now, Mr. Calabro, save the best for last.
Oh, gee, thank you. That's a hard thing to live up to, but yeah, I just have a few words to say. And first of all, I am humbled to have the honor to serve the people of Newtown Township again. I'd like to thank all the voters who came out on Election Day, those who voted for us, and even those who voted against us, because that's what democracy is all about. We intend to represent all the people of Newtown fairly and just not a selected few. There are some special people I'd like to thank. First of all, Ellen Schneider, for all her hard work. Anna Marie, Alex, Dennis, George, and Jerry. We work together as a unit and not as individuals. A special thanks to all our supporters and volunteers, because without them, it would have been impossible. I'd also like to thank our opponents, who held our feet to the fire and made us better campaigners. I would like to say to them that they should never give up, because Newtown needs fighters like them. I look forward to the many things that will be happening for Newtown in the coming years. We are all in this together, and with everyone's help, we will keep Newtown a continued gem in Bucks County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calabro. Moving right along, we have appointments. And the first set of appointments are those reporting directly to the Board of Supervisors to serve the township with compensation for 2024. First is, I need a motion to recognize Micah Lewis as the employment agreement as... Let me start again. Motion recognizing Micah Lewis's employment agreement as Township Manager.
So moved.
And I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is a motion appointing Micah Lewis as Township Treasurer and Secretary.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of appointing Micah Lewis as Township Treasurer and Secretary, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is a motion to appoint Kilkeny Law and Jerry Shankman Esquire as Township Solicitor.
So moved.
And I'll make the... I'll second that. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion to appoint Kilkeny Law and Jerry Shankman, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, next category of appointments is reporting to the Township Manager to serve with compensation for 2024. We'll start... This is a long list. We'll start with... The first one is traffic engineers, and the motion is to appoint Remington and Vernick Engineers as Township Traffic Engineers with appropriate authority to attend Board, Commission, and Committee meetings. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, next category of appointments is reporting to the Township Manager to serve with compensation for 2024. We'll start... This is a long list. We'll start with... The first one is traffic engineers, and the motion is to appoint Remington and Vernick Engineers as Township Traffic Engineers with appropriate authority to attend Board, Commission, and Committee meetings. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four one. The second one is for civil engineers. The motion is to appoint Remington and Vernick Engineers as Township Civil Engineer, General and Environmental Engineer, and Lighting Consultant with the appropriate authority to attend Board, Commission, and Committee meetings.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next category is geographic information systems, GIS engineers. Motion to appoint Remington and Vernick Engineers as Township Engineers for GIS services.
So moved.
And seconded. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is labor solicitors. The motion is to appoint the law firm of Curtin and Hefner as Township Labor Attorneys. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll just now.
Four one. Motion to appoint Mary Roseman as Board of Secretaries, Recording Secretary.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Give me a second while I turn the page. Next is individuals serving... Before I move on, Mr. Shankman, if you wanted to care to join us from up here now that you've been appointed?
Yes.
Yep. So our next item is individuals serving with compensation. That would be the zoning hearing board, and this is a motion to affirm the appointment of Paul Cohen, 2024, Tim Pontero, 2025, Matthew McCullough, 2026, William Wall, 2027, and to appoint Josephine Vlasstares, 2028.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, next category of appointments is reporting to the Township Manager to serve with compensation for 2024. We'll start... This is a long list. We'll start with... The first one is traffic engineers, and the motion is to appoint Remington and Vernick Engineers as Township Traffic Engineers with appropriate authority to attend Board, Commission, and Committee meetings. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four one. The second one is for civil engineers. The motion is to appoint Remington and Vernick Engineers as Township Civil Engineer, General and Environmental Engineer, and Lighting Consultant with the appropriate authority to attend Board, Commission, and Committee meetings.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next category is geographic information systems, GIS engineers. Motion to appoint Remington and Vernick Engineers as Township Engineers for GIS services.
So moved.
And seconded. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is labor solicitors. The motion is to appoint the law firm of Curtin and Hefner as Township Labor Attorneys. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Five zero. Passed five zero. Next one is building inspectors. The motion is to appoint Barry Aslett and Associates as Township Building Inspectors.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, and I will second it. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Next is pension actuary, and the motion is to appoint Mock and Hop Benefits Group as Township Actuaries.
So moved. I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Pension Investment Advisor. Motion is to appoint the firm of DeHab Associates as Township Pension Investment Advisor.
So moved.
Second that.
Have a motion and a second. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Insurance brokers or carriers. Motion is to affirm, and there's a list of carriers here, H.A. Thompson, The Hartford, Standard Insurance, Delaware Valley Workman's Compensation Trust, Delaware Valley Insurance Trust, and Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust as brokers or carriers of Township Insurance Employee Benefits. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Township planners. The motion is to appoint CKS engineers as Township planners.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. What's that? Were there any opposed? I'm sorry. It was five zero then. Official depositories. The motion is to designate, and another list follows here. The motion is to designate First National Bank of Newtown, TD Bank, Investment of Pennsylvania, and Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, also known as PIGET, as Township depositories.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is earned income tax collector, local services tax collector, and tax hearing officer. The motion is to appoint Keystone Collection Group as EIT, LST, Distribution Tax Counselors collectors, and tax hearing officer.
I'll make that motion.
And I will second it. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Next is the auditor. Motion to appoint the firm of Mailey LLP as the independent auditor to audit the accounts of Newtown Township for the fiscal year 2023.
2024.
They do the accounting, the auditing for the previous year. It's okay. It's easy to trip up on Ellen. I'll make that motion, however.
I'll second that.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Is there... All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is video production. The motion is to appoint Video Gold for 2024.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I'll second that motion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Nay.
Motion passes four one. Thank you. Two more. Emergency Management Coordinator. The motion is to appoint Glenn Forsyth as the Emergency Management Coordinator.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Next motion is the Fire Code Official. The motion is to appoint Glenn Forsyth as the Fire Code Official. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right, the next category, and I may take just a quick break. Next category is boards and commissions, individuals serving without compensation. First one is Neshemini and Little Neshemini Creek and Delaware River Plan Atho... Delaware River South Plan Advisory Committee. The motion is to appoint Micah Lewis as the Township Representative.
I have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion to appoint Micah Lewis, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Next is the vacancy board, appointed yearly. The motion is to appoint Mary Donaldson, ending December 31, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is the planning commission, a four-year term. Motion is to affirm appointments Craig Deutsch, 2024, Warren Dallas, 2024, John DiApril, 2024, Alex Treese, 2025, Shelley Holland, 2026, Joe Robb, 2026, Mary Donaldson, 2026, and to appoint Terry Christiansen, 2027, and Peggy Driscoll, 2027.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Pages are sticking together here. Next is Park and Recreation Board. It's a three-year term. Motion is to affirm the appointment of Cam Magas Zeehe, 2024, Dana Barber, 2024, Ricky Martin, 2024, Kelly Stormer, 2025, Christie Hardy, 2025, Catherine Anne Porter, 2025, and to appoint Jan Philios 2026, Rachel Chavet 2026. And we have one vacancy. But that's the slate. I will make that motion.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is the Newtown Area Joint Historic Commission. A four-year term. Motion is to affirm the appointment of Bill Maher 2024, Craig Deutsch 2026. And there's two openings on this committee. So we're not appointing anyone new. They will represent us in zoning issues, Joint Historic Commission with the Borough. If there are future appointments that... Names that come up to be appointed, we will appoint them in future meeting.
I will make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Snyder. I will second it. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is the Historic Architectural Review Board. A four-year term. The motion is to affirm the appointment of William Maher 2024, Mary Donaldson 2025, Harriet Becker 2026, and to appoint Barry... Oh, wait. Barry Islett Associates will be affirmed, appointed as the Building Inspector for 2024, and Peggy Driscoll as the Planning Commission Liaison in 2024.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are two openings. I didn't mention there are two openings on the Histor... On the Harb Board, Historic Architecture Review Board. So again, if there's names that are submitted to us, we will consider them at a future meeting. The Newtown Joint Sewer Authority Board is a five-year term. The motion is to affirm the appointment of Linda Bobrin 2024, Ellen Schneider 2025, and Jerry Shankman 2027. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Having a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next... The next appointments are for the Environmental Advisory Council. A three-year term. Motion is to affirm the appointment of Mark Haber 2024, Peter Gillies 2025, Amy Easterly 2025, and to appoint Jan Philios 2024, Elaine McCarron 2026. And those who are... That is the motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. There are two vacancies on that council as well. Next is the Building Code Board of Appeals. A three-year term. The motion is to affirm the appointment of Craig Deutsch 2024 and Bradley Longoski 2025. There are two other spaces open. One is a third appointment, and one is an alternate. But Mr. Deutsch and Mr. Longoski can meet. They do have a quorum. So I'll make that motion.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. The Tax Collection Management Committee. The motion is to appoint John Mack as a Tax Collection Committee Delegate and Micah Lewis as alternate.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. As noted on our agendas here, there's a... There is a Veterans Committee. It's a one-year term. We have two submissions of interest. This is a seven-member committee. So once we get four or more letters of interest, we will consider appointing. But right now, they don't have a quorum to meet. The next and final committee is the Human Relations Commission. Motion... Okay, let me go back. This also... We cannot make an appointment this evening as well because this is a five-member committee, and there's only two letters of interest. Once we get one more letter of interest, we will make appointments. But right now, they are not able to have a quorum and meet. So if there's anybody out there who would like to be on the Human Relations Committee, please consider. Okay, the next... The next number of... Next order of business is ordinances and resolutions. So we're going to forge ahead here. First one is to set the bond's amount for township officials. It's Resolution 2024 R1 to set bond amounts for township officials, officers for 2024. Treasurer, Michael Lewis, $3 million.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this motion, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. The next is Resolution Adopting Act 153 Exemptions. Resolution 2024 R2 certifying properties that qualify for tax increase exemptions under Pennsylvania Act 153. Motion, second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is Resolution Reaffirming the Administrative Conditional Use Procedure. Resolution 2024 R-3 reaffirming Resolution 2007 R-10 establishing an administrative conditional use procedure. It's a tongue twister. I will make that motion.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is the reaffirm Resolution 2011-R-7 establishing the Township's Pension Plan.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries... Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. The next is Resolution 2024-R-4 Adoption of Fee Schedule.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, and I'll second that motion. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four... Five zero. Next is the 2024 Board of Supervisors Meeting Dates.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of setting the motion, meeting dates, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is the Procedure Directing the Presentation of Proclamations. This motion authorizes the chairman, after pulling the board, to have the chairman sign and the manager attest to proclamations honoring citizens and others for worthy deeds and activities.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Tax Ordinances and Resolutions. Motion to continue all 2023 tax ordinances and resolutions enforced pursuant to Section 4 of the Local Tax Enabling Act for 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Just a couple more. IRS Mileage Reimbursement for 2024. Motion is to approve the 2024 IRS Mileage Reimbursement. I'll make that motion.
Second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is Standing Nonstatutory Committees Authorized by the Administrative Code. First is the Pension Plan Committee, appointed yearly. The motion is to appoint Micah Lewis and to affirm the appointments of Joseph Martindell, CWA firefighter representative, Chris Bush, the Police Benevolent Association representative, and John Eilman, CWA non-uniformed employees representative for 2024.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we... All those in favor of passing this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And lastly, but least of the committees is the Occupational Safety Committee, which is appointed yearly. The motion is to appoint Micah Lewis, Glenn Forsyth, and to appoint the PBA appointment of Chris Bush and the CWA appointments of Joseph Martindell and Michael Jones for 2024. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And last, on my agenda here is Liaison, Coordination, and Assignments. One second while I gather myself. I'm just going to read all of them. We'll make the motion and hopefully pass it at the end.
It's at your pleasure.
Oh, okay. At our pleasure. Okay, I will read them off. There's no vote. But so... Bucks County Association of Township Officials, Bucato, is Kyle. Bucks County Community College is John. Community Service Organizations is Kyle. The Council Rock School Board is Ellen. The Council Rock Senior Center is John. Homeowners Association is Phil. Historic Architectural Review Board, Dennis. Joint Zoning Council is all of us. Newtown Ambulance Squad, Ellen. Bucks... Newtown Borough Council is Dennis. Newtown Fire Association is Ellen and Dennis. Newtown Joint Historic Commission is Kyle. Joint Municipal Sewer Authority is all of us. Park and Recs Board, Kyle. Planning Commission is all of us. County Tax Board is John. EAC, Environmental Advisory Council, is Ellen. And Veterans Committee, hopefully we can get a quorum, is Kyle. That is it for the appointments and resolutions and motions to vote on. I do see on my agenda another round of public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like my comment? Seeing none. Any miscellaneous items from the board? I should mention, because I forgot to read it off the top, is that we did hold an executive session on Thursday, December 21st, for issues of personnel.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Sure, you may.
I noticed on one of the committees, the Human Rights...
Human Relations.
Committee is not enough people have volunteered, and we can't appoint anybody. I know that it's very important, especially these days, about assuring the rights of citizens in this commission would look into any complaints about discrimination in housing and employment in Newtown. Obviously, I don't know if we have any such problems, but there are other issues that I think the Human Rights Commission has discussed in the past. And I would just urge anybody who's listening to this to see if they can spend a little time to participate in that commission. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I would... As we're moving and seconding, I would second that unofficially, that we put that out there. I know I have someone I've been trying to track down to ask. But there are three vacancies. Now, they can operate with just three people, but that's the quorum. So we need at least one more, and there's up to three more. Any other comments from the board?
I would just like to thank you, Chairman Fisher, for being an excellent chair. And, you know, you're an example to follow. And I'm happy to do that because you have a lot of wisdom that you impart. And I appreciate that.
Thank you. We're a team. We're a team, all of us and our supporters. All right. Mr. Lewis, anything else to report?
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Our next meeting is next Wednesday at 7:00.
Next Wednesday at 7:00.
And that's our regular board meeting. Thank you, everyone. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting, and thank you for coming out. Happy New Year.